Welcome to this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. The types of business that occur at these meetings include public hearings, official voting on actions by the Board of Commissioners, presentations by departments of the county, and recognition of service that makes our county great. As your elected representatives, the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners is committed to improving the lives of all our residents while preparing county government to meet the demands of the future. In order to do that, we need to share our thoughts and plans with you. More importantly, we need you to share your thoughts, concerns, and opinions with us. We encourage you to come and experience the process by attending any of these meetings. They occur every first and third Thursday of the month at 6:00 PM at the St. Clair County Administration Building at 200 Grand River Avenue in Port Huron.
Okay, we're going to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner McConnell, here. Commissioner Tamiyan, here. Commissioner Heidemann, here. Commissioner Riley, here. Commissioner Rushing. Commissioner Greathop, here. Commissioner Bowman, here.
Additions, deletions, changes to the agenda? Seeing none, item four, approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I would move the approval of the agenda as presented.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Item five, minutes of previous meeting, items A through B.
Mr. Chair, I move that minutes of the May 21st, 2015 Commission meeting and the June 4th, 2015 Standing Committee meetings be approved and filed. Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Item six, proclamation, item A, recognizing Laura Newsom for 30 years of service.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the proclamation recognizing Laura Newsom for 30 years of service for the Council on Aging.
Support. I'm not going to read that. I'm assuming somebody will be attending that and will be able to get that proclamation to her.
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Item seven, consent agendas, item A through K.
I would make a motion to approve items 7A through 7K on the consent agenda.
Second?
Heidemann.
Question, Jeff?
Yes.
Harry, maybe you can answer this one on somewhere in there listing, they list all of the different banks and under general friend of court, they list private bank. What is that referring to?
The friend of court has an account that runs through the state for the support payments that they collect.
Okay.
So I believe that's who that account is.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion on anything? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Reports of standing special committees. Commissioner McConnell.
The only thing that I had was I'd been contacted by a gal from the DNR and somebody, Bill Dieter from Grant Township, and the DNR is trying to purchase 80 acres of land to add it to the state game area.
Out in Grant Township?
Yeah, it's in Grant Township. Last year they purchased, was it last year, Harry?
Yes.
Was it 2014? They purchased 74 acres. This is the same family. So they're asking us to do, I don't know, an acknowledgement, Carrie found the previous one, just so that when they apply for the grant that it's approved by, that we're okay with it as long as Grant Township. Grant Township has already given it their graces.
Okay. Very good. Anything else?
Ten of the road commission meeting on Tuesday night. So, everything seems to be going well. Kind of questioned whether they were going to get their 900,000 this year or if it was going to be messed with.
Yeah, no, when you talk about road funding, I've been on the board now, obviously, 10 and a half years, as you guys know that. It was 600,000, Howard, back then, and we've actually increased that amount. We even looked at increasing that amount more, but they only, the townships only have the ability to match so much. So in theory, you could put in, you know, a million and a half dollars if you chose to do that.
They can't match it.
They don't have the ability to make the match on it. So 900,000's pretty well been the number that they've been working on for the last, you know, few years. But, you know, when you talk about increasing that fund from 600 to 900 and worst economy ever, I think it shows a testament to our commitment to the road program here with the county. Commissioner Tamiyan?
I have no report this evening.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Just one comment, and that is the newspaper article regarding the completion of the wetlands construction at the end of the Riverwalk in what is developing as a new county park down at the south end of the Riverwalk. And I guess I'd ask people not to walk on newly planted grass and vegetation and stuff and stay on that path.
Okay. Anything else, Howard?
Nope, that's all. Thank you.
Commissioner Greathop?
Just want to report that the Community Foundation has their grand opening tonight for the St. Clair mall area that they completely redid. We were all invited there. Unfortunately, we had our meeting tonight and kind of didn't allow us to get down there. But if you do get a chance, if you don't get down that way too often, get down there and take a look at it and see how they've revitalized that. It has the appearance that it is going to revitalize that whole mall area with the mall going in, the short building behind there being sold, and some new fresh money coming in, some things happening. So, good news for St. Clair, and I'm not reporting because it's in Jeff's area, but I'm reporting because it's the Community Foundation doing it. I know Jeff's been following this very closely also. That's it.
Okay. Tom?
Just information, next year, May 20th of 16, I have set up to have the emergency management breakfast up here at the convention center, which I think is very proper. And we're going to be back at Marysville for the golf for another year. I have those contracts all set up and arranged for.
May 20th, okay, very good.
Cardboard canoes or something from here? A little raft trip?
I'll give you an extra half hour to travel.
I usually don't like planning things a year out because some of them board members are.
Well, either way, I'll be on emergency management group, so.
All right. Anything else?
No.
I'll go take a pass. Item nine, are there any citizens wishing to address the board at this time? Seeing none, unfinished business. Item 11, approval of the county disbursements.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I would move to approve county disbursements for May 2015 in the amount of $12,745,877 and 72 cents.
Support. Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Tamiyan?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Greathop?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Chairman Bowman?
Yes.
Item B, the Freedom of Information Act policy revisions.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to adopt the revisions to the Freedom of Information Act policy as presented.
Second?
Discussion on them at all, Bill? Just a quick question, and I don't know, Chris is not here, but when I was reading through there, you know, you're limited to charging 10 cents per page, but you can also do it via email. Does anybody know, can you charge for email then, or you're just going to charge labor?
I can't tell you what the actual cost that you can charge, but you can charge a fee relative to the structure, your internal structure to be able to do that.
Okay, so you can get the labor back out of it, but you're not, since you're not going to actually use a sheet of paper, it's going to go that way, you can't get the 10 cents.
There is a fee that is allowed to be charged, though, because of your cost of this, the implementation of your structure, your internal electronic structure.
Okay, I got you.
You know what I mean?
All right.
But it's, obviously, it's reasonable, like the 10 cents or less.
Good. Thank you.
Anything else on that?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Item C, the fund balance policy revisions.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the fund policy, fund balance policy as was presented at our committee.
Support. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Item D, the 2014 Operation Stone Garden Grant Agreement.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve the 2014 Operation Stone Garden Grant Agreement in the amount of $46,504.
Support. Just a little footnote, that thing used to be in the $2 million range, if I'm not mistaken. Two million three hundred thousand, does that mean that we secured our borders and we don't have to be careful anymore? Is that what that 46, from 2 million down to 46,000? What is that?
Of course, and we got that much away.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Item E, the 2016 Cooperative Reimbursement Program application for prosecuting attorney.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the Cooperative Reimbursement Program grant application to the prosecuting attorney's office as presented.
Support. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed. Item F, the amended contract application for the 2016 FOC Cooperative Reimbursement Program.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the Cooperative Reimbursement Grant Program application for the friend of the courts as presented.
Support. Discussion on this. All in favor?
Aye.
Item G, 2016 Michigan Mental Health Court Grant Program.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the 2016 Michigan Mental Health Court Grant Program application in the amount of $211,821.78.
Support. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Item H, the County Master Recreation Plan update.
Mr. Chair, I would move the approval of the addendum to the professional service agreement between Metropolitan Planning and Park and Recreation to conduct the County Master Recreation Plan update for an amount not to exceed $17,800.
Support. Discussion.
Yes.
Maybe somebody can tell me, how do you, how do you get, or how do you go about getting some input into what they put in there? If I have some ideas or suggestions that I think would be pertinent or that would maybe like to see changed or added to that, Howard, maybe you know, how do you go about?
Yeah, that was brought up at our Park and Rec meeting here, just at Metropolitan Planning, and David Struck, our director of Metropolitan Planning, said they were going to try to do something similar to what they did earlier where they had a computer where you could go online.
Okay.
And put input into it. But if all else fails, I would simply go in and talk to David.
Okay, thank you.
I think what we did a few years ago, correct me if I'm wrong, we kind of had a work session, did we not, Howard?
Right.
With the Parks and Rec guys? I mean, that's about six years ago.
Yeah.
Kind of stuff. We're getting that.
I think that was discussed, too.
I think that'd be a great idea because there's been turnover on the commission and on the Parks Board as well.
More kind of makes sense. Okay, super. Thanks, guys. Roll call on that, please.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing's not here. Commissioner Greathop?
Yes.
Commissioner Tamiyan?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Chairman Bowman?
Yes.
The item I, the Park QBS for Professional Service results.
Mr. Chairman, I move that Board of Commissioners designate the following firms as the most qualified for the submittal of proposals for Parks and Recreation in each category of core through the year 2018. For landscape, architecture, Harvey, Ellis, and Deveraux is the first firm. The second is Harvey, Ellis, Deveraux, and UCT. The second firm is PMB, Smith Group, JJR, and third is Row Professional Services. In the second category, architecture, H2A Architects, Partners in Architects, and Sci Design. And in the third category, the civil engineering, project control engineering, Row Professional Services, and Tetra Tech.
Support. Discussion on this at all? I know Carl, you were pretty instrumental in working on this.
Lot of hours.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Item J, Parks and Rec Commission Appointment. We have three different people interested in this. We're going to do a ballot.
We have to sign the ballot.
Yeah, it said your name on it already there, Howard.
In case he can't sign it, we typed it in for him.
I know how Dave Rushing would go.
Oh, you want his ballot?
Thank you.
You're looking for just one versus one?
Send them back this way.
No.
Make your motion.
One for Michael Bembas. Michael Bembas. Michael Bembas. B Castello. Sharon Hagerty. Michael Bembas. Michael Bembas has four.
Okay.
Kind of after the fact, but I got to move to close the nominations, cast ballots for the appointment of the Mayor Lawrence position on Parks and Rec.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, Michael Bembas is the person. Okay. Item K, the 2015 Michigan Blade Elimination Program Application.
Mr. Chair, I approve. I move to approve the 2015 Michigan Blade Elimination Program grant application in the amount of $250,000.
Support. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Item L, the Chiller Maintenance Agreement.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I would move to approve the Chiller Maintenance Agreement with Limbot Company LLC in the amount of $107,064 for a term of 7/115 through 6/3018.
Support. Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Greathop?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Tamiyan?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Chairman Bowman?
Yes.
Item M, the Employment Agreement for the Library Director.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I would move to approve the Library Director Employment Agreement with Ellison Arnold for a term of 6/2715 through 6/2718.
Support. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Item N, Resolution 1516, approving summer tax levy.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt Resolution 1516, approving the summer tax levy for all local governments.
Second?
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Item O, revisions to the intergovernmental transfer of function responsibility with Macomb County, the Workforce Development Board.
Mr. Chair, I move to adopt the revisions to the intergovernmental transfer of functions and responsibilities with Macomb County for workforce development activities.
Support. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Item P, the Economic Development Grant Agreement with the SMR Automotive Job Training.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the Economic Development Grant Agreement with the Michigan Strategic Fund in the amount of $2 million for SMR Automotive Job Training.
Support. Discussion.
I have a question. I don't know, Carrie, if you can answer this, but who is going to provide the training work for administering the grant? Is this a, are we talking about a contract with like a community college? Who's, who's actually performing that?
You know, I don't know the answer to that, but I can find out.
A lot of times, the college is the ones that facilitate those things, but they don't, they're not always necessarily the ones that they hire. The SMR can go hire outside professional people to do that. I sit with Kevin pretty regularly, and as part of our Blue Meets Green, the communication on these monies have become much better. They call, they goes into a queue every so often, and it gets rotated around through the different community colleges. And a lot of times, they would come into the room and they would say, hey, we've got $300,000 or $400,000 left, and you've got a week to spend it. And it's always been kind of one of those, well, hell, it would have been nice if we would have known it was coming, but he just sent me an email out the other day to everybody, and the next, they're, they've got the $500,000 for the next queue, and we've got nine months. So, and it really gives Dan Casey the opportunity with the different companies that he's working with to use that part of some of his recruiting strategies and those types of things. We've actually brought the college in. We had a big meeting in Marysville. I'm not sure if any of you guys were there, and we brought the college in to talk to that program, to talk about that program when we were going through the recruitment of the company, and probably the company was most interested in that, that more so than a lot of the other things. So just that whole communication, working very closely with them, has been, it's been really good.
Yeah, that's one of the things that I've seen really change over the years. It used to be the key to one of these projects was the tax payment, and it's not so much anymore. It's, it's training and making sure that they have the workforce. The workforce is a, is a bigger economic piece of it than, than the taxes themselves, even though they are getting, in this case, they are getting a 190 tax payment.
Yeah, I think we're really doing a much better job with the whole recruiting process and having all the right people sitting in the room, all these companies are coming in to talk to about it.
I'll just, I don't expect an answer to this question, but I think the House bill that's dealing with road funding, one of their proposals is to substantially deplete the financial resources of the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, so that may have an impact on how economic, if it passes, it would have a significant impact on how the economic development business is.
Yeah, that particular bill would really stir up the MEDC big time, from pure Michigan campaigns to, you know, job training programs, all the above. So, be interesting to see how that plays out.
About 50%.
Yeah. Is it, yeah, I knew it was a lot.
I just talked to Nick from the state on that yesterday, and he was quite concerned.
Yeah.
Because, you know, he was working on the Marine City project, and we were talking about whether that money would be available or not, and he doesn't know. Nobody knows.
Have to wait for the Senate.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Item 12, the Administrator's Report.
Just one update real quick. Earlier this week, myself, Bill Kaufman, and Greg Hill went to Lansing, and we met with the State Treasurer and two of his, members of his staff to talk about personal property tax. We were able to get most of the answers to our questions on the different reporting requirements, how we report it, when we report it, and how our reimbursements will look. So, it's good news for us. It looks like we will start getting our reimbursements in '16. How much remains to be seen, it depends on how much actually drops off our tax rolls, but it's estimated somewhere between 70 and 80% of the eligible personal property will fall off the tax rolls next year. And then we'll get reimbursed at a rate of 100% for the part that's attributable to essential services, and the part that's attributable to non-essential services will get reimbursed depending on how much the state's collections are. So each municipality would get reimbursed at the same rate. So if they collect enough to reimburse everybody at 100%, that's what we'll get. But if they only collect enough to reimburse everybody at 80 or 90%, that's what we'll get. There is six bills that were taken up by the Senate today. I did not see if they passed before I came here. That actually changes all the personal property tax legislation that was passed last year, changes deadlines, due dates, which is good for us because we had a deadline coming up here in the next two weeks, and the Treasury has not yet had a chance to issue guidance on it. So they did push that deadline out for a whole year. So that was also good news.
Carrie, when they talk about the local government units that provide essential services, what's their definition of essential services? I would think police and fire would be at the top, but perhaps it's not, maybe it's education.
Well, it's police, ambulance, fire, jail, and homeland security, juvenile corrections. Is, the bill, the legislation actually defines what they consider essential services. 911 dispatch was not addressed in the bill, and that is something that we discussed and didn't really get a clear answer. They wanted me to send over my reconciliation and my calculation. I think they're still trying to work on some guidance and a format on how local units will be reporting that, so. That, we have a whole, another year now that was going to be due the end of this month, and now it'll be due when we file our audit in 2016. So hopefully by then we'll have some clear guidance.
When we have the amount of personal property, every year, a substantial part of that drops off because of depreciation. I mean, the existing personal property, a substantial portion of it drops off for the next few years, but then there's, there will be now new personal property added, though, correct?
Correct. Well, in 2019, the formula changes, where your essential service reimbursement is basically pegged at your 2013 level forever. Your non-essential portion, they're going to rework the formula beginning in 2019 where they try to come up with an actual value of estimated market value of personal property in your county. We're not really sure how they're going to do that since businesses are no longer required to report their personal property under the new law. That remains to be seen, how that will work, but that's a couple years out. I think they're still working on figuring out how to implement the current bills.
It's interesting how these bills get passed before anybody knows really what they're going to cost. That's not a question.
You know, what, what I find a little disconcerting is that they're delineating what's essential services, and in our particular cases, county, we have all these mandated services. If they want to be really fair about it, it should be money allocated for all mandated We still have to do them, you know, whether it's the courts or, or the jail or whatever, or dispatch.
Right.
We don't have to the clerk's office.
We did ask about courts as well, why that wasn't included, but, you know, unfortunately, we were meeting with members of the Treasury at the legislators who wrote the bill, so they're just like, well, this is the law.
Carrie, did they say anything about the 911? Why did, why that was not included?
You know, they didn't, and they didn't really have a good answer for that. You know, I kind of got the impression that it could almost go either way on that.
It seems like, you know, Bill, I was just talking to you, it sounds like, I mean, that should really be tied into the police and fire.
It should, and in some counties, dispatch is a function of the sheriff's office for that, so they would probably include that in their essential service budget, whereas if it's a separate division, it may not be. So there could be a lot of inconsistencies in how local units report that information.
Anything else, Carrie?
Nope, that's it.
Motion, receive and file, Administrator's Report.
I'd move.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Item 13, miscellaneous business. Just two things, friendly reminder, July 2nd is going to be our meeting. It's going to be same, 6 o'clock downtown. July 9th, we're going to be doing that in St. Clair at the St. Clair Boat Harbor as part of the traveling road show. I'm going to be hosting that, and casual attire is required. No suits, okay? Shorts preferably.
Cutting off ties if they show up with them.
6:00 PM, yeah. So, that is at the St. Clair Boat Harbor.
So our two, our two July meetings are the 2nd and the 9th?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, fourteen, received and filed?
I move we receive and file packets and all of the information presented.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.[1716.81]